Good evening. Welcome to the November 19th, 2025 School Committee Meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We're going to start off the meeting. Joe Garrity is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to start off with open public comment. First up, I have Dan Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Dan Williams, 835 Mount Hope Street, North Attleboro. And this is my 21st year teaching social studies at the Ahern Middle School. I'm here to spend just a few minutes this evening sharing my experiences around extra help and to talk about a couple of things that some members of the public might not be aware of. Many teachers in the district provide extra help after school, sometimes on a regular basis and sometimes at request. Most of us are generous with our after-work hours, and if a student asks me to work with them after school, I would try to find a time that worked for both of us. Unfortunately, providing after-school help is not always effective because often the kids who need the most help do not stay after school. Therefore, we provide extra help every day as an integrated part of the school day. Teachers are constantly assessing student understanding and providing targeted interventions as needed. This extra help often occurs as a core part of a class period, such as when teachers use the workshop model to deliver a mini lesson and then engage in reteaching concepts to individual students or to groups formed according to identified needs. Extra help is provided, as you know, by special educators and educational assistants in regular classrooms and academic labs all day long. Teaching in 2025 does not mean stand and deliver and hope for the best. We are constantly engaged with assessment and remediation, extra help. In addition, for 7th and 8th graders at the Ahern, we've created a half-hour warrior block in the middle of the day during which students can go get help from whichever teacher they need to see. My teaching team works together to make sure that kids go see whichever teacher they can help them the most on that given day. I've used this time both for reteaching concepts and to lead error analysis sessions to a selected group of students who demonstrate that they need the extra help. In fact, today, I had a group of students come to my room to take another look at the content that we're wrapping up this week. Next year, Foxborough High School will be introducing a similar program called Fox Block, which will be similar. It will run every day for 30 minutes, and each department will have a priority day on which they can call in a student for extra help. Most teachers do work unpaid hours beyond our teaching day, and as professionals, we decide how to best use this time. Some people use the time for additional work with students. Often, this time is used for grading assessments so that we can provide timely feedback and extra help to our students when they walk in the next day. Sometimes we use this after-school time for lesson planning and collaborating with colleagues, and many teachers run after-school clubs that provide important enrichment opportunities for our students. To conclude, as professional educators, we provide extra help every day in ways that work, and we deserve to have the flexibility to use our after-work hours as we see fit. Thank you.
We have Darren James and Zach Diorcy and a group that wanted to come up and speak together. If you wouldn't mind, just introducing yourself in the microphone, please.
Teach at the Borough School.
I'm Kara Way. I teach at the Borough School.
Darren James, 12 William Street, resident of Foxborough, teacher for 22 years at Foxborough High School.
Elise McMahon. I'm the wellness teacher at the Taylor School.
Jackie Godbout, 4th grade teacher at IGO, 165 Chestnut Street in Foxborough.
Zach Diorcy, Ahern Middle School Spanish teacher.
And April Fuller, 1st grade at the Borough School.
Good evening, Superintendent Burdos, School Committee members, and Foxborough community. We stand before you today not only as a representative of our professional staff and educational assistance, but as a voice of fairness, dignity, and respect.
For far too long, our dedicated educators and support staff have been asked to do more with less. We are entrusted with the responsibility of shaping young minds, supporting families, and ensuring that every child in this district has the opportunity to thrive. Yet, despite the critical nature of our work, we continue to face a lack of respect during negotiations. The membership continues to fight for a fair contract and for livable wages that fall short of what is needed to live in our communities. Our members have taken time to write postcards about how they feel about the state of negotiations and our ongoing contract negotiations. We urge you to read each postcard. We have chosen a few to share with you tonight.
At the start of each school year, professional staff and assistants are told how much the district values our professionalism, expertise, and dedication, making Foxborough a destination of choice. Each of our contributions helps our students to feel valued, supported, and heard. As a Foxborough employee for 27 years, I am proud to have been part of creating a culture and community of respect and teamwork. However, it is time that all educators, both teachers and assistants, also feel supported and heard and valued. So, Dr. Burdos and members of the school committee, I am asking that instead of telling us that you value us, please show us that you value us by giving us the respect that we deserve. Show us that you are listening to our testimonials and are concerned by providing productive solutions that address our financial and job-related concerns. Please search outside the box for creative solutions to show your educators that you value us and you care about our quality of life.
As a proud alum and now dedicated teacher, I know firsthand the impact to Foxborough schools. My deepest hope is that we can finalize these contract negotiations. A successful contract isn't just about recognizing the dedication of our staff. It's about strengthening the foundation of stability and passion that benefits every student.
We are proud to work at a national blue ribbon and DESI-recognized school. Please compensate our hard work and dedication to the town of Foxborough appropriately.
As a teacher, I pour my energy, creativity, and care into every lesson, every student, every day. I stay late to plan. I show up early to support. A fair contract isn't just about pay. It's about respect. It's about recognizing the value of the work we do. When teachers are supported, students thrive, and that starts with fairness.
Each of the proposals the union has made regarding benefits and modification of the contract we have, if approved and agreed to, you would use as a recruitment tool and a retention tool to retain highly qualified individuals in this department and in this school institution, and then you would truly be a destination district. Thank you very much.
In addition to the postcards, the membership reviewed the school committee's last offer. The membership completed a survey, and overwhelming majority of membership voted to reject the current proposal presented by the school district. This is not simply about numbers on a page. It is about the future of our schools. If we cannot attract and retain talented, passionate educators and assistants, our students' education will be impacted. Respect, fair contracts, and living wages are not optional. They are the foundation of a strong, thriving school system. We urge you to recognize the humanity behind the job titles. We urge you to stand with us in ensuring that every professional staff member and educational assistant is treated with the dignity they deserve. Our fight is not for ourselves. It is for our students, families, and the community we serve. Thank you.
Okay, I have one more name on the list, and that's Sue Snyder.
Hi, my name is Susan Snyder, and I'm a Special Education Assistant at the Borough School in Foxborough, and I've been an assistant for 17 years, and I lived in for Foxborough for over 30, and my kids went to these schools. I work in a sub-separate classroom with an amazing team, and we all truly love what we do. We teach severely autistic children, as well as students with complex medical diagnosis, trauma backgrounds, behavioral challenges, and students who can't talk or communicate. This is the first time that I have ever been on a negotiation committee. What ultimately made me commit to this was my concern for what I see happening at our schools. I can say from what I have witnessed, it's almost impossible to hire and keep qualified educational assistants. This affects the students because if a room is short, staff are filled with the short-term subs that are not trained, the students might not get the services that are in their IEPs or the attention they need to learn and progress. The assistants and teachers in Foxborough have been working close to two years and are currently working without a contract. I have been extremely disappointed with the lack of respect from administration and the school committee. During negotiations with of all of you sitting there, the lawyer for the town responded to an assistant who said she couldn't afford the school's health insurance. We were told that we were lucky to have benefits and a low-paying job like this and that the state of Massachusetts offers health insurance for people with such low incomes. But don't ed assistants deserve insurance like everyone else? We were also told that you only need a high school diploma, yet 3/4 of our assistants have a degree or are working on one. The ed assistants' job description has not been updated in over 20 years, and it needs to reflect how much our job has changed. We were told we could leave if we were unhappy, but I love my job and I love my students. I'm simply asking for respect and for the district to recognize how important educational assistants are and give us what we deserve, a fair wage. We showed you documentation showing that you had the funds to cover the increased wages we were asking for, and you looked at us and agreed but said it would not be going to us, educational assistants. Towns like Canton, Norton, and others pay significantly more and have better benefits. Many other towns like Foxborough are currently in contract negotiations and fighting for livable wages. We are not asking for anything excessive. Claims that our proposal would cause layoffs or require an override are meant to create fear. Educational assistants in Foxborough only get paid for the days we work. We do not get paid for any holidays, school vacations, or during the summer. Most other towns give holiday pay. Times are changing. All you have to do is listen to the news. School district after school district are fighting and winning livable wages and increased benefits. The state of Massachusetts is so concerned with the shortage of assistants that they are putting together a bill that requires a minimum salary of $55,000. Schools can't run without us. It's easy to find other jobs that pay more or are not so labor-intensive and stressful. The students of Foxborough, especially the students I serve, they need highly-trained assistants who don't quit or leave after a few months. I beg you to listen. We just had two assistants in preschool give their notice. I know a teacher who's at the Ahern. They're waiting for an assistant. If the wages don't come up, we can't find assistants, and we definitely can't find quality assistants. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I'm going to take this opportunity to make a very brief statement about our current collective bargaining process. As with public comment, this is not a time for back-and-forth questions and answers. After my statement, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. The school committee has been engaged in collective bargaining with its unionized employee groups for the past year. We have amicably settled and have a new three-year agreements with our secretarial, food service, and extended-day unions. We are still engaged in the collective bargaining process with our teachers and educational assistance unions. Unfortunately, we have not been able to come to an agreement with either of these groups as of yet. Massachusetts has a legal process for such situations, which includes assistance from the state in the form of mediation and fact-finding arbitration. We will continue to engage in this process in good faith. I want to encourage anyone with an interest to please visit the Foxborough Schools website at foxborough.k12.m-a.us or simply Google "Foxborough Public Schools." We have provided factual information there on the status of collective bargaining with our two remaining groups for anyone to review. To be perfectly clear, we value all of our devoted school employees and are grateful for them and for the very important work that they do. The school committee has always and will continue to engage in the bargaining process in good faith. As always, our intention and goal is to come to fair agreements. This includes agreements that are fair to the employees, fair to the school district, and fair to the taxpayers of Foxborough. Finally, as with everything we do, we are guided by what is in the best interest of our students. Thank you, and we can now move on to our next agenda item, which is the approval of We have regular meeting minutes for September 24th, 2025 in our packets.
I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for September 25th, 2025.
Did we...I actually have a question about...
Sure.
The...it was...I thought we pushed back a date for the five-year strategic plan. Didn't we push back that date till like January?
We're going to present that at the December meeting. It was going to be...it was pushed to November. It was October. It was pushed to November, and then with only having one school committee meeting in November, we had to move it to December.
Can you just cite where?
Yeah, it's page seven, under Goal Three.
Thank you, thank you. Page seven, under Goal Three.
Is Dr. Burdos' goal being by October of 2025? I remember that we pushed that back, so we definitely don't want that to reflect October 2025.
Good catch. Thank you very much, Pat. Can we just approve the minutes with that correction? So, page seven, under Superintendent Goals. It says on Goal Three, District Improvement Goal, it says "by October 2025," but it should be January of 2026, correct?
No.
Oops, sorry.
It would be December 2025.
December, sorry, December 2025.
Thank you. Is that all? I make a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes of September 24th, 2025 with the given edit.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right, all in favor? 500, thank you very much. We're going to...that's the only meetings minutes that we have, so we're going to move on to the teaching and learning highlight, the IGO Elementary School Art Buddies. Come on up. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Kristin, you want to point back at the booth?
Hi, my name is Kristin Siddle. I am the school counselor at the IGO. I've been at the IGO for 17 years, I believe, and we're here tonight to talk about our best buddies, our Art Buddies program that we have.
And I'm Michaela LaCroy. This is my third year at the IGO as the art teacher, and yeah, Kristin Siddle's been an amazing partner through all of this. So, this is our third year working together as a team for the Art Buddies program.
When Michaela's first year as an art teacher, probably her first...I mean, at the IGO, probably her first month, I said, "What do you think about this idea of doing an Art Buddies program with some of our students?" And she immediately jumped in and said, "I think it's a great idea, no hesitancy," and she's just been so amazing to work with over the years.
Thank you. Likewise. So, our Art Buddies program, it's an adaptive art program, and it's for our K-4 students in the STEP program, where we pair them with a fourth-grade role model. This goal is to just bring students of all abilities all together in a creative learning environment where they can all participate in meaningful, purposeful lessons together. It has a large focus on building community through creativity and also building friendships amongst students of all grade levels as well. The target group, we have our STEP students, and they're anywhere from kindergarten through 4th grade. This year, we have particularly, I think, students a mix of 1st and 2nd grade, so it's nice to have that mentorship from an older grade group, being the 4th graders with the little guys.
Yeah. We like to provide leadership opportunities for our 4th grade students. They know going through the IGO that when they are in the 4th grade, they have lots of opportunities to shine and to be role models for the others, so there's no better way to bring students together than through art.
For the objectives, inclusivity is obviously a big one for students. Social-emotional learning, which is something that is not only, I know with Kristin Siddle in the counselor area, but also as an art teacher, this is backed by the National Core Standards, the Massachusetts Framework Standards, and the Studio Habits of Mind. Expression as a whole, and then friendship, most importantly. Oops. Do you want to break this one down?
Yeah. So, what we do is we have some 4th grade students that we've worked together to select, and I work with them to help them become leaders in the Art Buddies program. We talk about how they can support students that have different learning styles, and it's great exposure for them to see from different perspectives and to build relationships and foster friendships with students who they might otherwise not have time to spend together.
And the activities are more my focus. Again, they align with the National Core Massachusetts Frameworks and Studio Habits of Mind. The collaborative part, I think, is one of my favorite because it's not just modeled within the program but with Kristin and I. The collaboration teaches that kind of mutual respect and reinforces life skills that can be transferred beyond the art room. So, in our...this goes into a little bit more about the roles. I went over that. So, there was supposed to be a cute video that plays here where they're doing their little rainbow dance. I know when you transfer to a PowerPoint, it doesn't all translate well. The interdisciplinary lessons are one of my biggest pushes as an educator, is helping students to connect what they're doing in art, because some of them are like, "Oh, why are we learning how to create?" Well, it's a lot more than that. It's teaching them life skills and 21st century skills that are a big push, especially with the vision of a graduate this year as well. And then the SCL lessons are kind of where Kristin comes in and brings her counselor experience to the table.
Yeah, we'll start our Art Buddies sessions with like a meeting together to do a check-in, to talk about our feelings, to share something special about each of them so that they can build that relationship. Michaela does a wonderful job showing the students that the art that we're working on for the day, and talks about our future goals for a collaborative presentation.
And then, as always, in my classroom, I go, "Dream work makes the..." and I go, "Teamwork." And collaborating is important, it's rewarding, and it's transformative, and through all of this, we're modeling that as collaborators on the adult side and then with the students as well. It's teaching them essential life skills like communication, empathy, problem-solving. It fosters their friendships and builds confidence and also changes how students can see themselves and others while creating new opportunities for growth. There's a couple pictures. And then for the future, unfortunately with the World Cup, the Foxborough Street Painting Festival is not going to happen this year, but this is a future goal that we'd like to work towards, is bringing this beyond the IGO school and into the community and having students participate in that in 2027. Once more information comes out, we'll kind of look more into that and finalize it, but that's a nice goal that we're working towards.
Last year, for the art shows that Michaela's been doing, she had a special Art Buddies in the art show to display their artwork, and they were so proud for their classmates and their families to see their artwork displayed in a special area in the art show.
Yeah. So... Thank you.
Thank you. This, you know, is just a nice program, and it's one of many things that the educators in Foxborough do to go a little extra. It might mean spending your Saturday driving around looking for craft stores that have the right supplies, collaborating after school, working in the evenings and the weekends to make these extra special things happen because we think it's so important for the students to have a sense of belonging and a sense of pride in themselves. So, I just wanted to say that thank you for all of the wonderful work you've done in this program and also for educators across Foxborough who do these kind of things every day.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much. Thank you for being here. Oh, wait, wait. I just wanted to see if anyone else had any questions or comments for you, if you don't mind, just for one second. Yeah, I just...this makes me so proud. I'm an IGO alum, parent, and now I have a little niece that's back at the IGO, so I'm so excited, and this is an amazing program. Did anyone have any questions or comments for them before they head off? I don't know. I just didn't want you to run away. I want you to know how much we appreciate you and all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm excited to look through that lens again, through the child's lens.
I just, when we make those connections, like one of the goals, there's the transformative piece, and when you think about what the kids are taking away from it, a lot of it you don't even know at this point, and you're going to see it later on in just the relationships that are built and the things that you hear in the hallways. So, I just think that it's wonderful that our kids are getting that experience to be models and work with each other, but that transformative nature is real.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we hope that we're building memories that they keep with them and look back fondly years to come.
Absolutely.
You helped my IGO girl. She still thinks about her time at IGO, so thank you very much. She's off to college, so...
It's amazing to think that some of these kids are in college, and that's when I start to realize how old I'm getting.
We stay the same age. They only get older. Thank you again for being here. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. We're going to move right along to the superintendent update.
I'll first start off with some congratulations, and the first one being our production from the Ahern on the Orphan Train that was under the direction of Scott Walker. I attended the Saturday production of that, and I continue every year to be amazed with the kids, the amount of lines that they learned, the expression, and then particularly with that one, just the historical piece, and then going back and forth with Scott, too, is just the conversations, really rich conversations based on that. But the set, all of the volunteers that helped to really bring it to life, it was quite the production, and the kids were amazing, as always. And then to be able to see more amazing kids, I would invite people to go to see Into the Woods Junior that's coming up at Foxborough High School on the 21st and 22nd for our musical production that will be taking place, and it is all ages as far as kids to go. So, come out and support our high school students as well. And then congratulations to our cheerleaders. They just placed 3rd in the small coed category, and they will compete on Saturday at Worcester State University for the state championship, which is awesome. They will not be able to then cheer for our football team, which will also be playing on Saturday, because they... on Saturday, because they will be playing at 12, as far as the, it was the quarterfinals that they won, and now they're moving on. And so 12 o'clock at Bridgewater Rainham. So we will see them go up against Archbishop High School. Yeah, is that right?
Archbishop Williams.
Yeah, Archbishop Williams High School. So anyway, congratulations to our cheerleaders and our football team, our productions. And then also, as a reminder, winter sports signup is still going on, so think about that. And then conferences are coming up, so we have early release next week to be able to meet with teachers and to hear and celebrate all the wonderful work that our kids are doing and what's taking place in our classrooms. And you heard a lot this evening about the wonderful things that are happening in our classrooms every day. And so celebrate that and be able to meet with the teachers next week through conferences. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is, has been sent out through myself, email, through principals, and that is the FOX Alerts. And if you want to sign up for that, you can go to the town website. That is so, it's a new mass notification system on the Foxborough Town side. You can choose what you want to get as far as alerts, whether it's emergency, community kind of news that are going on. But again, you can choose which kinds of notices that you want to receive. So I encourage you to sign up for that. And that pretty much sums it up, I think.
I would like to piggyback on, great job by the students that performed in Orphan Train. Great job by the football players that, you know, killed it on the field. But thank you to Foxborough, to our school resource officers and police department that helped navigate the traffic through that Ahearn. On Friday night, we had a play going on and a game, and I heard that it was smooth sailing. So thank you for all the planning. I'm sure a lot of administration did planning. And thank you to Foxborough Police to make sure we had a safe, effective, you know, wonderful evening for everyone, so.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you brought that up, Ms. Frazier and Dr. Donovan too. They did a lot of behind the scenes work with police too, to make sure that it went smoothly.
Yes, I'm sure there was a lot of shifting behind the scenes to make that happen. But I just want to say, I live right around the corner, and smooth sailing, nothing but good feedback, you know? That's great. That's all we want, is that people be happy, healthy, safe, win, you know, perform, so thanks.
So get out this weekend and go see Into the Woods Junior at Foxborough High School too, as well as football, and if you can cheer on our cheerleaders.
For sure. All good stuff. Thank you so much. Anyone have anything else? All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on to our school committee student report. We have Yasmeen and Stevie.
All right, so for the Ahearn, the book fair is going on this week. And then next week is going to be, or let me check that, I think that it's two weeks actually, is going to be the elementary school book fairs. So that is happening. College fairs are continuing in the downstairs media center in the high school for the rest of this month. This month is also Children's Grief Awareness Month, and all of the guidance offices at all the schools have information to help anyone dealing with that.
Don't forget to order your 2026 yearbook before January 2nd. Also, if you're a senior, don't forget to order your cap and gown before December 5th. We have the Thanksgiving pep rally next Wednesday where our teacher will be wearing a turkey costume. And then Thanksgiving morning, we have the Foxborough High School team will go against Mansfield for the Davenport title.
And that's at Mansfield this year, correct?
Is it? Yeah, it is at Mansfield this year, 10 a.m.
Don't show up to the Ahearn. Thank you very much, both of you. All right, we're going to move right along. We have quite a wonderful crew. We have the 2025 MCAS Base Lines and Benchmark Report and Results. We have Dr. Burrow's going to help us, Ms. Hendrickson, Ms. McKinnon, Dr. Waz, Dr. Matcharnik, Mr. Johannes Meyer, and Mr. Servideo, if you'd all like to come on up. Thank you. Appreciate you all being here.
Okay, so we're going to do this in pieces so that everybody has a seat at the table and there are enough chairs. So at the table right now are Noelle Hendrickson and Karen McKinnon, our K-8 curriculum directors. I'm going to talk for a minute, give you the 30,000-foot views, and then I will punt it over to our curriculum directors, and they can talk in more depth about how we get these amazing student outcomes. So you have a number of things in front of you. It is probably overwhelming. We also have a number of new people on the school committee, so I thought I'd just take a minute to just talk about what have we been doing for the past few years, just to kind of get you up to speed. These past maybe five years or so, they've been challenging. We've come off of a pandemic. Really, one of the major things that we've focused on is that foundational curriculum and instruction. So we've focused on inclusive practices. At school committee, the members that have been around for a number of years have heard us talking about things like inclusive practices, multi-tiered systems of support. So that's getting kids what they need, when they need it, and getting kids the level of support that they need so that they can access grade level content, master grade level material. So we've placed a pretty significant emphasis on that. We've really supported our teachers, our special educators, in our education assistance and understanding what collaborative teaching should look like and how we can best support kids to really help them master that grade level content. We've also shifted a bit in fifth and sixth grade. We've started standards-based report cards, which is yet another, even though it might seem a little different than inclusive practices, it's yet another touchpoint where we're focusing on foundational curriculum and instruction. These are the grade level standards. This is how we're supporting our students in mastering the grade level standards. Over the course of maybe the past year and a half or so, we've had some opportunities to focus on innovation. We kicked off last school year with an AI Day, a digital learning day. We've spent a little bit of time helping our students and helping our staff understand how to use AI tools and understand really how those AI tools and accessibility features are helping our kids. And we've also coupled all of that with research. So these past few years, Karen McKinnon and myself have been working closely on the science of reading and making sure that our elementary teachers are getting training on what that means and how that might shift teaching and learning. So I know that's a lot, that's kind of a crash course on what we've been working on for the past five years. But the point being, this is really, tonight is really a presentation about data and about assessment and student outcomes. But none of that is possible without that hard work around curriculum and instruction that we've been doing on a daily basis, on a yearly basis, with our curriculum leadership team, with our educators that are in the room this evening. And I'm so happy that you've stayed. And it's been a lot of hard work, and we have a lot of success to celebrate tonight. I'm really proud of where we are, and I think everybody in this room should be really proud of where we are. There's so much to celebrate tonight. So I'll talk a little bit about the statewide accountability system. I am going to try not to get too technical. I could get very nerdy about this. I'm going to be brief, I promise. So the state essentially gives every school district in Massachusetts an accountability percentile score that's based on a weighting on each of these indicators. A lot of these indicators are really high school specific. So our elementary and our middle school, their indicators are really chronic absenteeism and MCAS achievement scores and student growth percentiles. Our high school, they have a lot more indicators. One of the things that the state has done in recent years, because chronic absenteeism was such a priority, they've placed greater weight on chronic absenteeism in the past three years in that accountability percentile. So that's one of the reasons why I've been highlighting chronic absenteeism in these presentations for the past few years, because it's important. We want our kids in school. Being in school is very important. So, and the state has placed greater weight on that to encourage our school districts to pay more attention to that and come up with innovative ways to try and mitigate that and get our kids in school more often. I think one thing that is important to understand is that this statewide accountability system is independent of that MCAS graduation requirement. So the MCAS, we are required to have a state standardized assessment that is a part of our statewide accountability system. Attaching MCAS to a high school graduation requirement was designed to incentivize students to really be motivated to take that test, but it's really separate. It was just an uncoupling. The accountability system still exists, and those MCAS scores are still the greatest weight, have the largest impact on our school accountability scores. Just a couple of data points, and then I'll move on from this. We did have two schools that had accountability percentiles above 80% this year. That is a very big deal. One of those schools, the Taylor School, earned a School of Recognition distinction from the Massachusetts Department of Education, excuse me. And that distinction is because they have reached pre-pandemic performance levels. So pretty amazing. Another thing of note, we had two schools that gained more than 20 percentage points between last year's accountability percentile scores and this year's. I just think that's unbelievable. So we really, we had a banner year, really, amazing results. So I like to put things into perspective. It's a nice round number. I like giving you a bit of a frame. Where were our kids in spring 2025, when those kids sat for the MCAS? Where were they five years ago, when the pandemic was in full swing? And you see at the bottom there, those grade three and grade four students, they really weren't impacted. They didn't have gaps in learning, they didn't experience hybrid learning, they did not experience the pandemic during school age years. That's part of the reason why we're seeing those greater gains at the elementary level when we look at our MCAS scores. Just a reminder, I said this last year, research does show that when there are interruptions in student learning, which is why we want our kids in school, we don't want our kids to be chronically absent, when there are interruptions in learning, it takes on average three to five years to make up that ground as compared to their peers who did not have interruptions in learning. This is the state data on the right-hand side. I don't want to belabor the state data too much. What I will tell you is that in previous years, our trends have been almost lockstep with the state. Ours are different this year. There are some areas where we're fairly consistent. In grade 10, we saw a bit of a decrease in our scores, as you would imagine, with MCAS no longer being a graduation requirement. However, when you look at other grade levels, there are areas where the state declined, where we saw our scores improve. So I don't want to belabor the state data and talk too much about that. So what are our areas of strength? You can find this on page two of your report, right at the bottom. These are kind of our summary takeaways. After all of the data analysis that our curriculum leadership team has done, these are really our summary takeaways. Our graduation and attendance rates remain high. They're consistently higher than the state. Our teacher retention rates are very strong, consistently higher than the state. And we do, we continue to outperform the state. One data point that I think is very interesting, that Mr. Servideo will go into more depth about later, is that over the past few years, we've seen increases in the number of students that are accessing advanced placement courses. And you would think with more students taking it, that our scores might go down a little bit because we're encouraging more students to take it. These are challenging college-level classes. That's not the case. More students are taking it, and they're continuing to improve their scores. So that really, I think, is an amazing data point for us. And I do think it's a K-12 data point because it shows that throughout the student experience here in Foxborough, we are preparing them for the rigor of a college-level course, and students are feeling confident enough to access a college-level course during their high school years. And more and more students are feeling that way. I think that's awesome. And another small little data point that Dr. Matcharnik asked me to mention is that our AP Physics C students, 100% passing rate on that AP exam this year. So that is pretty amazing. That is a very hard test. So here are some of those data points and numbers. I do tend to grab the same data points every year for you so that you can see that consistency. And I intentionally, when I grab these, these are from the District Analysis and Review Tool on the Massachusetts Department of Education website. It's public data. So one of the reasons why I do that for you, just for the folks of you that are new on the committee, is because I want you to be able to go onto the Department of Education website. I want you to see the same data that I'm seeing. I want you to be able to click through the years and see the same trends that I'm seeing. There is quite a bit of information on that website. These are just the data points that we've consistently shown you. Because they paint a clear enough picture of what's happening in our schools, they give you a good representative sample. If you take a look just at our MCAS grades three to eight average scaled score, this is a data point that the department consistently mentions every year. And if you compare just where Foxborough is in the 24-25 school year, you see that ELA grade three to eight average scaled score and the math average scaled score, that 504 that we see there. Those are actually consistent with our 2018 numbers. So we're now at a point which I think is fantastic. We're now at a point where that average score has reached our pre-pandemic numbers. So very happy with that. A couple of things that I'd like to point out from that table. Our chronic absenteeism rate, I went in and grabbed the state's chronic absenteeism rates just so you could see the difference. Chronic absenteeism is for students that are absent 10% or more in the school year, so that's 18 or more days. We have, it was certainly an issue during the pandemic. We've drastically decreased those numbers, and we're continuing to decrease those numbers. We want our kids in school. It is very important that kids are in school so that we can mitigate and make sure that there are no gaps in their learning. Another data point that I think is really cool, and I hope you will too. So when you look at Foxborough as compared to the state, that's our special education population over the course of the past five years. And if you look, Foxborough's population is going in the opposite direction of the state. And really, when I look at this data point, I want to be careful not to make the conjecture here that this indicates a downward trend. I think this data point really illustrates the work that we've done around inclusive practices, the support that we've been providing in the classroom to our students, the collaborative teaching, workshop model, the differentiation that we've been doing in the classroom. I think that this data point is really an indicator that we are identifying students less for special education services at that level. We certainly have a number of students with disabilities across the district, and those needs are dynamic, so that number is always changing. I don't expect that number to continue to decrease. I just think that that image is a clear picture of our work around inclusive practices. I started sharing the Views of Climate and Learning data last year with you all. This is a survey that students take at the end of their MCAS test. The department has been collecting this since 2018. This assessment is This assessment is done in grades four, eight, and 10. Foxborough had over a 90% participation rate, which is much higher than the state in grades four and eight. In, in grade 10, it was a little less, as you can imagine. And the state has been collecting this data since 2018. I'm sharing it with you just so you're aware of the types of questions that your student might be asked at the end of the MCAS. I think it's pretty amazing that kids are sticking with these questions at the end of the MCAS. They are optional and we have over a 90% participation rate in, in our schools. So this is an example in grade four. This is in the engagement category. A couple of data points that stuck out to me. In my classes, students teach each other how they solved a problem. I thought that was pretty cool. If you look on the right-hand side, there is the, the state percentage point on the far right and then the Foxborough percentage point, just one column in, so you can see that difference between Foxborough and the state. And I think it's pretty interesting that our students are being asked to teach each other how they solved a problem at a greater rate than the state. This other set of questions is a grade eight example. This is through the instructional environment category. And you know, when, when you look at the data on the right-hand side, again, you'll notice some differences between our, our students and the state average. The data point that I really like, 95% of our eighth graders said, "My teachers believe that all students can do well in their learning." I think that's very telling. If you think about the number of assessments that our eighth graders have to take, the number of MCAS tests, they stuck with taking that, this vocal assessment and they answered that 95% of our students were in agreement with that statement. So I, I think, I think it's really nice to see. Okay. So I am going to very quickly talk, big picture, 30,000-foot view MCAS, and then I promise I am handing it off to our, our curriculum leadership team. So this is just a snapshot of where we're, we're at grade level to grade level. You'll notice greater gains in those lower elementary grades. We're in, in many cases, double-digit percentage points above the state here in ELA. So we are moving in the right direction and it's really great to see. Again, at the, in, in mathematics, double-digit percentage points, many of our grade levels, almost 20 percentage points ahead of the state. Again, really, really great to see. One thing of note is if you look at that grade five score for, for science in 2024, we were two percentage points below the state. In 2025, we're 10 percentage points above the state. So you know, really, we have a lot to be proud of and you know, we, we have a lot to celebrate here. So, so it's not just the MCAS that, that we're talking about this evening. We have local diagnostic assessments, universal screeners, local benchmarks, and what we do on a daily basis with our curriculum and instruction is really what, what propels these student outcomes and what, and what gets those achievement levels that we're getting on these state assessments. So with that, I am going to hand it over to our K-8 curriculum directors and they're going to talk a bit about the elementary experience.
Hi, everybody. I'm so happy to be here tonight. This is one of the nights I look forward to the most because for me, this is about celebrating excellent teaching, excellent instruction, and the day-to-day instruction that got us those scores. So that's kind of what this is about today is celebrating excellent, excellent teaching. I have a lot of pictures because I take a lot of pictures when I go into classrooms a lot. So I just wanted to share with you, we, our, our math, our elementary math experience, you're going to see them through these pictures, a lot of game playing, a lot of tools in kids' hands, a lot of small group instruction, a lot of meeting kids exactly where they are. I don't know if we can play the video.
I don't know if it'll work.
And it's okay if not. That's a video that I got sent probably the third week of school and it's a fourth-grade teacher that said, "All right, you guys, it's time for..." And she said, "Math Fact Lab." And it's this online fact practice and they just erupted like they had won the Super Bowl. It was the funniest thing. So I just thought it was great because it sort of just speaks to the fact that our, our teachers do such a great job of making sure our kids feel like mathematicians and are just so excited about math. Dr. Burrows did mention, you know, the scores and all of that, which is wonderful. Our third graders, over, you know, like 68% of them were meeting or exceeding expectations on the math MCAS, but it's because of what you see in these pictures. It's because of small group instruction, kids at a table with their teachers and their needs being met exactly with what they need. You see vertical whiteboards at the bottom there, kids encouraged to stand up, share, collaborate, and to Dr. Burrows' point, talk about math. Those numbers are because of the intentional math planning that our teachers do every single day and get our kids so excited to do math. We were really excited about a couple little things at the standard level. This is the stuff that I talk about with teachers at PLC meetings. But that Math Fact Lab that I spoke about, it's, it's ways to see math problems visually, not just memorizing them and their, and doing it in a visual model. But we were so excited to see that 88%, we grabbed 88% of those points in multiplying and dividing within 100 because teachers get the kids so excited about a Math Fact Lab day. I mean, that, that's what it comes down to is that's why you see that. The number of operations and fractions as well, the first time these third graders are seeing fractions and we grabbed so many points above the state. And I like to refer to this test as the K-3 Math MCAS. All of those standards there began in kindergarten. And because of that, we celebrate every single teacher whose name has been on that child's, who's, who's had that child on their roster from kindergarten all the way to third grade because that matters so, so much. Fourth grade, again, really did a great job above the state with everything, but I wanted you to see the small group instruction on the left. I wanted you to see a kindergarten student in the middle there, learning how to do math workshop. How do I make a choice? How do I play a game? How do I transition into a small group? Those are the things that make it so that in eighth grade, we can do an effective math workshop. In the middle picture, you will see kids playing a game. And then this could vie for my favorite picture of the year, which I have a lot of good ones. But this one on the right, I was co-teaching in a fourth-grade class and we were teaching the vertical number line on how to round and this little girl was struggling a little bit. Finally, she gets it and she said, "Can you take a picture of me?" This is the greatest thing I've ever done. And so if you see that picture of her, that's pure joy on her face. And again, you can't put a score on that. You can't put a number on that. That's because teachers have, have been working in this district to make math accessible and fun. And I just can't underscore that enough that that's one of my favorite pictures of the year so far. Okay. So again, we, we do these standard, we look at, we dig into the standards with teachers. We really do look at released items. How are we doing versus the state? What are we proud of? Numbers in base 10. This is the first time that students are seeing whole numbers to a million. They go, they go from like 10,000 to like a million. So they're doing just so much more work and they've just done such a nice job grabbing so many of those points with whole number operations so that they can get ready to do the fraction work as well. 14 points above the state in the K-4 Math MCAS. Every child that took that fourth-grade test also had excellent kindergarten, first, second, and third-grade teachers too. So we want to just make sure that we understand that this is a total effort. The human place value slider is up there. That was from this year too. Teachers just do these really, they take really big risks in their class when they say, "I'm going to try something brand new, Noel. I don't know if this is going to work." But then they send these pictures and say, "This was a really cool way for kids to see shifting on the, on the place value chart." I want to just point out to the picture on the right, not often do you probably get to see our teacher meetings. That's a fourth-grade teacher meeting. We, I ran this meeting at the end of the year. Teachers are engaging in a geometry problem and they were so funny in this meeting. This is why I wanted to share it. They're like, "No, don't stop. Don't, don't, don't tell us it's time to stop. We have to figure this out." One of them is sitting back there. And, and, but they were so into this math that they were doing that they were going to take to their kids the next day. They were competitive. They were not rude, but like very, very much like focused on their, focused on the task. And so I just wanted to take a picture of teachers really at work, working on the math that will then impact the kids the next day. These are talented, talented educators who are all veteran teachers, but they were learning something new and they were doing it with such enthusiasm and gusto. So I just wanted to point that out. Okay. So the elementary model then goes up to the, to the middle school as well. K through eight is the math workshop model. I just wanted to point out to you on the side, that bookmark-looking thing is sort of the model of our instruction. We do a launch, we do a mini lesson, we pull kids into groups. There's often a menu. I'm showing you an example of a grade one menu and a grade eight menu, and then some type of closure. This model is a K-8 model. Kids know this. This is how they learn math. We've been, we're at this for over a decade and people come to visit Foxborough, not because they want to see some program, because we don't have a program. What we do is we, we have this math model that, that other districts want to look at and replicate. And I can't underscore enough how much collaboration has gone in on the math team. And then we collaborate with the teachers to make the best resources we can to get, keep math exciting and fun in Foxborough. And I feel like we've done, we've done a really good job, but it's taken a long time and it's still evolving. It never stops. So that's kind of our model there. You'll see the must-dos, the may-dos, starting in kindergarten all the way up to, to eighth grade. But that's a little first-grade picture up there of kids doing some may-do work choices in math. So I will hand it over.
I often say to Noel, I'm Karen McKinnon, the ELA and Social Studies Curriculum Director. I often say to Noel, "I have so much math trauma from the way that I was taught math and then if I had been taught math in Foxborough, I might be in her role and not in my role." So it is really amazing what they do on the math side. So let's switch over to ELA and we'll talk a little bit about the fabulous things that are happening in my side of things. We follow a very similar, there we go, very similar model, using a workshop model. It's been so successful in the math. We really want to, you know, make as many connections with kids as we can so that we do have our structure as this umbrella piece here where the things you see on the right-hand side are our direct instruction pieces that the teachers are giving their, their direct instruction, their mini lessons around different programs, Hegarty foundations, writing or reading. And then they also have a menu with may-do and must-do stations, sharing out, and then also some kind of a wind block where kids are able to work a little bit more on, on areas of need. And this is the fourth grade, which looks more similar to the, to the third grade, but they don't have Hegarty or, or foundations so much in their, their block. But so this is our framework. It's intentionally trying to be consistent with the math, makes things easier for kids to make connections, makes it easier for teachers to make connections. They've done a really great job on that. As Dr. Burrows said, the students did really well in MCAS on third grade, being considerably above the state and the same thing with, with fourth grade. So I'm really pleased with the attention and the time that the teachers are putting in to really make a commitment to increasing what we call stamina in reading and writing. So the amount of time that kids spend reading and writing in, in class is, is making a difference for, for kids. A big celebration that I just want to point out is in the, the writing side of things. So this was the spring 2024, fourth-grade MCAS. They're asked to write a paragraph. They're asked to write an essay. And then they're asked to write another either paragraph or essay that's not included in their score. It's a lot of writing that kids are asked to do. So we were at, in 2024, 36% above the state, but still, you know, 36% and then 39% for the essay, above the state, 3 and 7%. But this was spring 2025. Now, it's a different cohort of kids, but I think that the giant increase that we saw is due to the teacher's commitment to really working on that stamina in reading and writing. The MCAS, the, the essays, they have to read a passage or two passages and then they have to write. So there's a lot of challenging, you know, skills involved in that. And so the, the kids and the, the really rose to the occasion and, and the instruction that the teachers are providing was really something to, to celebrate with the, with the writing. Noel always talks about how it's like the K-3 or the K-4 MCAS and, you know, that can be said too on our side. And with this focus on writing, we've really seen teachers all the way down to the kindergarten level, really working on writing with their kids. This year, we're establishing writing centers in all the K-2 classrooms. And this is some kindergarten end-of-the-year writing that I just wanted to share with you all, too, students who really, you know, writing two, three sentences by the end of kindergarten is going to go a really long way for the kids as they go up through first, second, and then into third grade when they're tasked with the writing of multiple essays and multiple paragraphs. So we're, I'm really proud of the, the work that the kids and the teachers have done on the focus on this, this writing. We are year three in our, finished year three in our new writing program and they typically say, "When you adopt a new program," it's like three to five years before you start to really see those, those, you know, expected gains. And we're really, we're really seeing it. And I do hear from teachers repeatedly that they really love the Empowering Writers Program that we have adopted. K-8, it's a swing year, but really K-7. So we're seeing a lot of great results. Kids loving writing, teachers loving to teach writing, which is a difference and a kind of a deal maker for, for our students. So we talk about MCAS, but we also have the FastBridge screener for K-7 students. And so this is our kind of assessment of early reading skills. And it's a risk assessment, so it doesn't give you like a grade level, but it's, it, it shows a risk level for kids potentially having trouble in acquiring reading and writing skills through their schooling. So I wanted to highlight that the, we started this in 2021. We've had a 10% increase for our K-1 students over the course of, of starting this and that's attributed to the real commitment that teachers have made to foundational skills, teaching phonemic awareness and phonics in the, in the early grades. So I wanted to highlight that as a great success for, for us in the district. Some of the things that Dr. Burrows talked about that we've been working on is this idea of the science of reading. So there's a lot of research out over the last 10 to 15 years about how kids learn to, to read and the teachers have made a real commitment to learning about these shifts and kind of changing their practice. So this is what Scarborough's reading rope here and these are the areas that we need to make sure that, that kids understand and, and learn in order to become skilled readers. Reading is not a natural process. Many of people who are my teacher, back in, in school, we were taught that it was natural, just like learning to speak. And we know now that it's not. So teachers have been tasked with kind of, you know, on their own time, learning, researching. And then we've also worked to provide some professional development for teachers. So we're in the middle of a two-year, well, we're ending, we're in the middle, which finished year one of a two-year partnership with the Hill for Literacy where we're providing professional development for all K-4 teachers on the science of reading and it's delivered through their, our professional development days. So it's, it's been great to have all the teachers on board and trying to update their, their practice as much as they can. We also did a book study last year, a whole, three schools, K-4, on Shifting the Balance. There's two different books. One was geared to K-2 and was, was to three to five. The literacy specialists were instrumental in running this professional development for, for, for teachers in the buildings. That's been really helpful in us, again, shifting our practice. And we're continuing as, with the literacy team this year on a different book, Beyond the Science of Reading, trying to keep ourselves updated on what's current and happening in the field of, of reading and learning to read. So I'm just going to keep on going because now we're going to go to middle school and I'll do my part on, on the, the data here. So Dr. Burrows has gone through this, so I'm not really going to talk too much about the specifics for the MCAS in grades five and six. One of the things that I, that I do want to touch base on is the fifth grade, we typically, you know, it's, it's a transition year for kids, right? They come from, you know, three elementary schools, they're coming into the middle school. So you know, it's a big kid's school now, they're all combining together. It's typically a challenging year on MCAS. It has been. And we've did really, really well this year. So I think the, again, the, I can't commend the teachers enough for their real commitment on this focus on writing. When you're writing, you're reading, you're thinking, you're talking, you're doing all the things that we want them to do in, in literacy. And so by focusing on this writing, we've really seen some, some great growth. This was the fifth, uh, fifth grade ELA scoring 60%, 12% above the state on their essay. That's really like, we have not seen that in, in fifth grade in, in my time here. So really impressive. And I And I wanted to highlight a couple of things that we had nineteen students in fifth grade receive a perfect score on and on the essay. And this is again, when they're asked to write two essays and a constructive response. And then fifty nine students received a five or six points. It's really just tremendous work. And then sixth grade, twenty one students received a seven or eight. They get up to eight points, starting in sixth grade. So it's a little more challenging. And then fifty five students had a five or a six. And that's not to discredit all the boatloads of kids that got the fours and and the threes, which is also wonderful. But the teachers really committed to this writing, embracing the Empowering Writers Program. Anytime you adopt a new program, it's challenging for the big people and the little people. So I'm really pleased with the work that that's been done. Seventh and eighth grade typically, you know, doing pretty well on on MCAS. And that is, you know, continued. So I feel like in ELA, all across the board, we're we're heading in the in the right direction. We have a new MCAS this year. So we have civics MCAS. This is the first year that that the MCAS was administered to all students. We did participate in the pilot last year for MCAS. So we had a little bit of a leg up of kind of what this might look like. We didn't have as much of the the data that we got this year. But the assessment was really developed in response to kind of this renewed call to action in Massachusetts and the across the nation on, you know, civic learning and to strengthen the, you know, democratic knowledge in general. There was a law that was passed in Massachusetts in 2018 to promote and enhance civic engagement. So this is the test that's kind of the next step in in that that process. So what's on the civics exam, that's two parts. There's an end of year course that will cover the full range of civic standards that are taught in the eighth grade classroom. And then there's a one state level performance task that's centered on one of the topics that are covered. So these are the seven topics that are covered in civics. Last year, they told the teachers which topic it was going to be. So it was topic four. And so the civics, my two civics teachers knew that and were able to kind of really help prepare our kids as best as they could. The first time you 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 do it, you don't really have a lot of guidance or or information around it. But I wanted to show you guys a few samples of of questions. So this is not just a memorize the facts and spit them back out kind of assessment. They get to view multiple sources. It's a thinking, thinking assessment. They look at the different sources and they have to make decisions. There's multiple choice questions. There's essays. There's multiple part questions. It's a lot of reading and certainly then writing. The constructive response writing, it's a short answer writing. It 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 all of these questions ask the kids to explain the why behind some kind of law. So not just that I know that this law exists, but why does it exist and and who might benefit from it and who might not benefit from it. So that the the test is pretty, pretty complex. And there's a lot of writing that's that's involved in it as well. I would say for our first go around, we did pretty well. We don't have a graph that shows multiple years, because this is our first attempt at it. But we were above the state. And that's always the 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 goal and the and the the benchmark that we want to be at. But we did spend quite a bit of time with the civics teachers, looking at the released items and looking at the released student writing to kind of get a a better handle on what the test is, what the expectations of the test are. And I feel really confident that we will be able to increase those scores as we go through. I do worry about testing fatigue with the eighth grade. This was the fourth MCAS that the kids were asked to complete in the spring. So this was done the last week of May. And so it's it's a lot for them. And, you know, the amount of reading and writing that the kids are asked to do. So I think that's something that we always have to take into consideration. But I feel like the course isn't a good, a good place. And the teachers are in a good frame of mind. And we'll keep working on on increasing those scores. But like I said, for our first go around, I think we did okay.
Great job. Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
All right, we'll jump back to math at the middle school level. What's so nice is that our model continues. The teachers in fifth grade don't have to reintroduce what math workshop looks like, sounds like, should feel like. It's all there, because kids have come up learning math this way. Our fifth grade did really well. I'm so proud of them. This is the transitional time. We often do see some dipping in scores, but but they did so well this year. That's testimony to the teachers just planning such intentional, meaningful, hands on math workshops. You see pictures of kids with fraction towers there, building to make equivalent fractions, not just because it's a procedure, because they know how to actually do it with their hands, which makes such a big, big difference. And then they're also continually in small groups. Sixth grade, same thing. When you walk into a sixth grade math class, it's not quiet. It is definitely lively. There's a lot going on. Kids have technology. Kids are self checking. Kids are building, cutting, talking to each other. That's what it feels like in in a Hearn math classes. The K to seven assessment, again, you will see kids in small groups. You'll see kids hands on, doing all the kind of stuff in math workshop that we want them to be doing, talking as much as possible to each other and learning from each other. And then the K to eight math assessment, we're so happy to have our eighth graders rise to to high school. We're so proud of them at sixty percent meeting or exceeding expectations. That is such a nice number. That graph looks so good to us. And again, it's testimony to kindergarten through eighth grade, small group, hands on, intentional math workshops. So again, that's all about the teachers. So thank you. Science, we are really trying to embed more hands on activities for K to five in science. You see a picture in the middle of that little boy. We've been making sale cars at the IGO in grades three and four. They're building, they all have maker spaces in their in their in their buildings. And so we're using those maker spaces as often as we can. You see a picture of sixth grade STEM Day over on the right, where we invite folks that have STEM careers to come in and engage with our students. The scores are the scores, but the the test has shifted. The test now is simulation based. So the the students are actually involved in simulations. And they are then not having to memorize, like what Karen was saying, we're not memorizing the life cycle of a frog. We are in simulations where kids are then having to pause, having to recalibrate their simulations, having to write about the simulations. So we've put in place in all of our science classrooms, experiences for kids to do just that. And they're loving it. And then again, there's just pictures of kids doing what they should be doing in science, which is hands on. We have a lot of Project Lead the Way going on at the middle school level as well. That bottom left picture is medical detectives. And so we're seeing like the benefits of that. The score, again, the scores, we're going to be, we're shifting fully into that test, the simulations test this year. That was a hybrid of these two. The fifth grade and eighth grade, that was still a hybrid of the two different types of tests. But that shift is an important shift. And we think it matches sort of more of our philosophy. I've been part of the STEM ambassadors program where I'm learning more about this test. And the more I learn about it, the more I think it's so much more authentic to kids and what they're going to be experiencing in the A Hearn and beyond. And so I think that wraps us up.
Thank you so much. I know how much went into this, and we appreciate you sort of digesting this for us and giving us a really good look. And in the absence of your video that you played, can I just, can I just share something personally?
Sure, of course, Sarah.
My niece just came to IGO. I've said that into the third grade.
I saw her today.
Night one, it was, it was a pitcher with a sad face and tears. We are two and a half weeks in, flew through her homework, doing amazing.
Good. She made a sale car. She's awesome. Yes, good.
She's awesome.
I'm so happy to hear that.
Thank you all. Thank you. All right. We have our, our high school data team. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. It's good to be here. I'm Shannon Wazalowski. I am the English Department Head at the high school. And I'm here to talk about the grade ten ELAM CAS results for 2025 and highlight the work that our English department has done to support student learning. So in 2025, fifty one percent of our students met or exceeded expectations on the ELAM CAS, matching the state average of fifty one percent. This is the same percentage as in 2024, but the state average dropped from fifty seven percent in 2024 to fifty one percent in 2025. So we maintained while the state average declined. I think it's also important to compare this cohort of students to their previous progress. So when these students took the ELAM CAS in grade eight, forty six percent met or exceeded expectations. So while there's no change between 2024 and 2025 results, this cohort of students has made progress since eighth grade. This tells us that the department's, the department's work is helping students sustain and build on their skills in grades nine and 10. On the other side of the slide, we can see that of the twenty four percent, or I'm sorry, of the twenty four students who did not meet expectations on the 2025 exam, eighty five percent of them either didn't attempt the essays or wrote too little to be scored. So we think that these percentages point to test stamina being a real challenge for students. Students do not have opportunities to replicate MCAS conditions in classroom. So as we turn to look at the trends over the past four years, you can see that our percentages of students not meeting expectations are in the single digits and well below state averages in years 2022, 2023, and 2024. However, the number jumped to fourteen percent last spring. I think it's important to note that this jump in students not meeting expectations is not an accurate reflection of our students' abilities, what we know that they're able to do. The timing of this shift, we think aligns with the change in the graduation requirements. So when MCAS no longer counted towards graduation, more students either left the essays blank, wrote minimal responses, as I mentioned before. This slide shows that our reading and language section scores remain close to or above state averages. Our writing scores continue to lag behind state averages, but the department's focus on frequent in-class writing and feedback strategies has helped us to make measurable progress. So in 2024, we were eight percent below the state on the essay section. And in 2025, that gap narrowed to four percent. We can also see that progress on this chart, which shows the growth in our students' writing scores, moving from seven percentage points below the state average in 2024 to two percentage points below in the 2025 exam. This is a line graph showing our students' scores on individual test items. This shows that our students were performing at or above state levels on the reading and language questions. Oh, yes. No, not math yet. So at this time last year, we used the 2024 MCAS data to take a more intentional approach to writing instruction, adding frequent in-class writing opportunities in grades nine and 10. And the growth in writing scores that we're seeing tonight reflects that focus. This year, our department is continuing that commitment by emphasizing daily writing in grades nine and 10 to build stamina and confidence, which are essential for success on extended tasks like the MCAS essays. This year, the English department implemented revised grading practices. So we are focusing exclusively on summative assessments in the grades. We're removing behavior based penalties such as late points. And we're clearly identifying assessed standards on all summative tasks. These changes ensure that grades more accurately reflect what students know and what they can do. So this clarity is going to provide teachers, families, and support teams with more reliable data to monitor progress and deliver appropriate interventions. Additionally, our grades nine and 10 teachers meet regularly to analyze summative assessment results to identify gaps and target instruction. Amongst department heads, we've had discussions about implementing literacy across the curriculum, which would give students an opportunity to practice reading and writing in all of their classes, which would help build their skills and their stamina. And additionally, the high school is leveraging our vision of a graduate to increase literacy skills by asking students to write learning reflections in all of their classes. So overall, I want to take this opportunity to credit my department for working hard in their classes and in their common planning time to design and deliver instruction that meets the students where they are and helps them find success. I'm excited to see how our new practices and strategies will help our students continue to build stamina and engage in their learning.
Fantastic. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Too far. Good evening. My name's Tim Dronzmy. I'm the Foxborough High School Math Department Head. And we've been mentioned a couple of times, but with the grade test 10 MCAS no longer being a graduation requirement, we're definitely like a little bit more nervy about how the the results were going to turn out this year. But I'm happy to say, as a whole, our still students did really perform well, still outperformed the state in a lot of different ways. When combining that exceeding and meeting expectations categories, we're still six percentage points higher than the state. And whenever students do underperform, we always kind of take a look under the hood and try and see what's going on there. And there definitely was, similar to in in English, a noticeable drop in the number of students who were like completing all of the questions, especially the non multiple choice questions. There was a little bit more of that. So again, test stamina, maybe related to the the graduation requirement. Right now, we're just like, it's something that's noteworthy. We're keeping in mind, having conversations with students as we we get ready for the next round of exams in the spring, trying to really kind of motivate them to 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 push through it this upcoming spring. Again, we show this every year. Last handful of years, relatively consistent results, no major shifts. I just wanted to highlight the not being expectations, just like in English, remains in the single digits. And our gap between us and the state has been widening over the years from five percent back in 2022, up to nine percent for the last couple of years. Hopefully, we can kind of push that into the double digits going forward. We've got a lot of content domain areas. And when breaking it down, domain by domain, we are meeting, are really exceeding our expectations, performing above the state in all but just two of the domains. And the two that were below, like, one of them is tied and one's just one point below. But we would like to just kind of note that helps us to inform our instruction, what do we need to kind of shine a light on in the future to try and close some of those gaps. For example, a few years back, Circles were the only domain that we were a few points below the state in. We rethought how we were approaching that content, put a little bit more emphasis on it. And since then, it's been one of our strengths. So really just kind of informing our moves going forward, making sure that hopefully next year, we've got all green numbers there. Similarly, really quickly, again, different question types. Are we exposing students to a variety in our assessments? And that seems to be the case. There wasn't one question type that seemed to stick out as being more difficult for our students. They really excelled in all of those areas. Again, as a math teacher, I love a good graph. Always put this picture on there. And our our students outperformed the state in the vast majority of the questions. And just like domain by domain, the ones where we both perform well and don't perform as well, we take a look at those. And for the ones we, our students don't perform as well on, oftentimes when we go back and look at those individual questions, we find that like, oh, like, the question was maybe worded a little bit differently than I normally do and stuff like that. And it really just highlights the the awareness that, again, we know that as teachers, we don't want to be stuck in the same routines. We want to make sure we're mixing it up. And we also want our students to be able to apply their knowledge in a variety of ways, because it's impossible to ask every single question every single different way. So just making sure that they've got those transferable skills that they can tackle whatever they're given. And one of the things that we've been trying to do to help improve those skills, I've talked about a few times here before, is that a couple of years back, we did a book study on building thinking classrooms, and really been incorporating those practices more and more. My favorite quote from the book is, if you want students to think, give them something to think about. So it's really just focusing on more and more opportunities for students to wrestle and and bounce ideas off each other with new concepts, rather than just telling them, okay, here's the steps, here's how you do it, and then go from there. I want to show a couple of examples this year of what those tasks look like. So for example, this statistics example on the left, of course, I picked statistics. Like, it could be easy just to say, okay, here's a set of five numbers, calculate the average, add them up, divide by five. But really, this task gets to more of the idea of like, well, what is the mean, right? There's conversations about it being the balancing point in the distribution, the fact that for the mean to remain at three, the sum of the data has to remain at fifteen. So all those kind of secondary levels to it really come out in these sort of tasks that students really just kind of discover for themselves. And a new tool that we've been using, this came out of our curriculum review last year, is Delta Math. And one reason why we're really excited for is that the MCAS data is really nice. But by the time we get it, it's too late to really do anything in the moment to make any sort of intervention. But Delta Math is allowing us to get real time data to make intervention with students, know, okay, we're ready to move on from this. We need to spend a little bit more time. I put some stats up there just because I I found it really interesting. I double checked this morning. We have surpassed 100,000 hours so far, just in the first few months of school, which is a lot. And that that graph down the bottom right, of course, another graph, it shows that the tool is really being used both in class and after school. That shows the number of problems that are completed each hour of the day. So you see that big spike in the middle. But then there's also a lot of work being done after school. done after school. Kids are really taking advantage of it. I don't know if there's quite the excitement as with Mac Fact Lab, but maybe we'll get there. It's still new. Maybe next year, I'll have a video of of a bunch of kids cheering. That'll be the goal. And yeah, just really, in summary, again, I just want to give a shout out to all the teachers in the department. The hard work that they're doing is truly incredible. The students know our doors are always open, we're always here to help them with whatever they need, and everyone's just always asking themselves, what can we still do to to get better and better?
It's amazing. Thank you so much.
All right. So onward to science. And the data is what the data is, and it's maybe not quite what it was in 2024, but we're still holding on against the state. And I actually went back and dug out what the shift was for the difference in when MCAS transitioned from not counting way back in the ancient past to counting, and that there was a 16% jump in students that were like in the correct direction, that from not meeting or partially meeting, and that we have this 13, we only have a 13% drop this time. So, you know, it's not a huge thing, but it it lines up. And so that's worth knowing that it's about what you might expect. I think we have the same issues with the constructed and open response questions, but I think the more important thing to point out is that we have those 19 students at the top who are exceeding expectations. And those 19 students took their time. You can tell because they earned 100% of the possible points in the constructed response items. And that shows us that when the students take their time to do things, they really can do them, which I think is really important for us to highlight. Go.
Is my big head blocking it?
There we go. Again, how things go year by year, I'm not that excited about this one way or the other, but you can look and see and enjoy. Always happy to hold on against the state. This is where I get excited. So these are our domains. The test is in biology, and probably this is the moment when I should go ahead and point out that my data that I have been presenting to you here is for ninth graders. And so it's called the 10th grade MCAS, and we do have a handful of 10th graders who have moved into the district that are taking it. But biology is offered in the ninth grade in Foxborough, and so they take the test at the end of ninth grade. So depending on where you look online, what data you're going to see, because the state reports on the current 10th graders in one place, and the state reports on what happened this year in a different place. And so I'm reporting on what happened this year because we don't really need to rehash what happened a year and a half ago. But having said that, when we get to this slide, most years, I tell you, oh, it's no surprise, they did really, really well in ecology. That's the last thing we teach. And then I, and last year, I told you that, well, molecules to organisms, a big chunk of that is taught in the fall, and that, and it was not as great a margin over the state as it is this time. They went back, teachers took it really seriously. But also, we began major curriculum shifts three years ago, which you've heard me talk about before, but it started with physics, it moved to chemistry, and we're now in biology. And last spring, our biology teachers were brave enough to take on piloting a whole unit in a completely new curriculum at the end of the school year. And that meant that they were piloting the ecology unit, their first try at it at the very end of the school year. And so while they'd all been trained in it, we've heard it takes three to five years in order to really get your footing in a new curriculum. And some of them did not quite finish the ecology unit before the MCAS came around. So we don't quite have the strength in ecology that we've had in the past, but we're glad to see that the extra effort in molecules to organisms paid off. In hindsight, we might not have done that. We might have gone ahead, and if we were going to do one unit, do it at the beginning of the year, because now that we're doing ecology at the beginning of this school year, we're seeing so much buy-in from the students. And after three quarters of the year, doing things one way and making that major shift in the spring, some of the kids were not feeling flexible about the shift in the learning dynamic, whereas this year, they're considerably more invested in the entire process. And it's now a very, very different curriculum. We'll get to all of those topics throughout the year, but they come up clustered together now. There's no PowerPoint instruction. There are PowerPoints, but they say things like, take out your science notebook. It's all about students making observations and asking questions and designing their own investigations and figuring things out. And will they learn that the mitochondria is the powerhouse of the cell? Probably. Hopefully, they won't recite it wrote like so many of us do. They'll just remember that that's what the mitochondria happens to do. Maybe? Nope. There we go. I also have the line graph, and we did have several questions where the students beat the state averages by double digits, and four of them were those molecules to organisms. So just giving a big shout out to our biology teachers for making that push last year. I did want to talk about our other new curricula as well and how well those are being received by the students and by the teachers. We started by adding modeling physics and one class from PLTW in our first year of our new curriculum. After the curriculum review, we moved on to modeling chemistry and yet another Project Lead the Way class, so that we had two engineering classes as of last year. And as of this year, we are now doing Open SciEd Biology, and we added both an additional engineering class for Project Lead the Way and the Principles of Biomedical Science. And this has just been a huge lift for the entire science team. It's not just learning the new content. It is a completely different way of teaching, and many of them are veteran teachers, which makes it a little difficult to accept that there's a completely other way to do things and that it's okay to do that. And they've just been 100% going for it, and it really shows in what the students are able to do. Ready?
Thank you very much.
I'm Andy Suvideo. I'm the guidance director of the high school. We're going to start with talking about some PSAT data. We, for as long as I've been at Foxborough High School, which is, this is year number 19, we have provided the PSATs for all juniors. We pay for the test, we organize the test, we register everyone. So all the students really have to do is show up on test day in the morning, they take the test for a couple hours, and then they they go to their regular classes. So we value the exposure to the test. It gives students the ability to see kind of where they stand, and then usually it gives them about six or so months to kind of have some targeted interventions for themselves to figure out where kind of some of their pitfalls are so they can practice for the actual SAT in the spring. So we look over the past couple of years, '22, '23, '24, and then when we really compare ourselves to the state and national averages, we're about the same year to year. We fluctuate up a little bit, we fluctuate down a little bit. I'm not overly concerned about any of that. I expect there to be ups and downs. There's nothing glaring either really like, whoa, what's going on? There's a downward trend over several years of a handful of points or major spikes down or major spikes up. So it's pretty comparable. It is, it is a practice test. I think one of the things that I think is different is it's the practice test for every junior at Foxborough High School, where we're comparing to the state and national averages, where it's not necessarily every student in the state or every student in the country, because this is generally like an opt-in test where students would take it on a Saturday. So you might have a little bit higher averages than some of the other areas because they're not, and it says being like told to take it during the day. So I do think that our averages are still pretty comparable and fair with the other two areas. When we start looking at SAT data, I feel like this reflects upon us a little bit better. So we look at where we were at '23, '24, '25, again, some fluctuations up and down a little bit, nothing I'm really super concerned about. If we see trends continuing to go up a lot, that's really important, or trends going down a lot, that's really important, but a little bit higher, a little bit lower, it's going to happen. Every class kind of has its own personality, every, you know, every grade, so there's going to be some differences. But I think what's really important is when we look at the next slide, where we look at the three-year averages, we look at FHS versus the state and versus the national averages, and we're above them in all three categories. So when we really look at the the scores over time, we're consistently doing really well compared to the other domains. We, as counselors, work with students to let them know about the SATs, let them know about the PSATs. We value the importance of both. A handful of years ago during COVID, things kind of migrated away from SATs being required, and a lot of schools went test optional. Even though there are still a lot of colleges that are test optional, more and more colleges are bringing it back either as being a required piece or a recommended or requested. So we're definitely seeing more of a need for students to focus on the SATs, which is why we're trying to get into, usually get into sophomore classes in the spring, and then junior classes usually in the in the winter to explain really what's going on for the SATs and get them prepared. So when they, when they take it, they they have some pretty solid scores that reflect their ability. We get to AP exams. I think there's a lot in here that I think is really beneficial to talk about. So when we look at the number of exams, it's going to be obviously a little bit up and down year to year, but we look at where we were last year at 196, and then this year we're at 213. So it's a pretty significant jump up. It's like 17 more students, and our population is about the same, but every now and then we drop a little bit, we add a little more, but we're still adding more students usually year to year. The thing, the real important thing is when we look at the tests administered at 540, that's a 46 test increase from the previous year. So we're seeing more students accessing AP courses and then taking the exams, and then also we're seeing more students taking multiple exams. We think it's really important for students to be exposed to the type of learning you're going to get in an AP course. We know that there's some students who might struggle along the way, they they want to really try an AP, they take it, sometimes they do well, sometimes they don't, but they're a better student for being exposed to a different type of learning, a college-level learning. And that's kind of reflected here. We look at the number of students scoring a three or better, we're at 415, which is a pretty significant number, and the percentage of the students scoring a three or better is at 77%. So we're, again, we're relatively comparable, but I think we're on the the higher side, which I think is really a testament to what the teachers do. It's really for the PSATs, the SATs, the the APs. As the guidance department, we don't really teach them what's going on, we just kind of explain like the structure of the test and help them organize it. It's really the teachers who are are getting where they need to be. And when I, when I think of Dr. Burrows earlier mentioning about Dr. Maternik and her AP Physics C exams having a, which is 100%, which is a three or better, we actually had nine exams that had three, 100% of the of the class had a three or better. We offer 18 exams in-house at the high school. So half of our exams, everyone in the course had a three or better. We do have other exams that, through VHS, that kind of add on, but the in-house AP exams, we, half of them were at a, at 100% for the course. So it's it's really, it's a testament to what the teachers do. I even think of whether it's Dr. Maternik's physics class or Dr. Woz's AP SEM or Research or Lang or Mr. Johansson Meyer's Stats class, they're the ones teaching the classes in the moment, but it's really the teachers before them as well. So it's the English nine teacher, it's the, it's the geometry teacher, and it goes back to middle school, goes back to elementary school to prepare students along the way. I think we look at this, we look at kind of the the big-picture data, what it means, trends, all that kind of stuff, and I think that's really important, but it doesn't really necessarily tell the story of each student. So behind all of these numbers are student stories. And some of the students who maybe scored a five, they're like, they've been killing it since kindergarten, it's been easy for them, they're taking five APs, and it's not a big deal. And then there could be a student who maybe had a really hard time learning how to read, struggled through middle school, worked hard, had teachers who helped them along the way, and they did okay, maybe they got like a three on their AP Lang exam. So it's, there's a lot more behind it, and there's student stories, which I think is really helpful. And as we're exposing more and more students to the exams, we're still seeing positive results. And I think it's a combination of the parental support, it's the support from our administration, guidance, definitely the teachers, the students themselves, and it kind of packages all together. I do want to say there's a couple of quick highlights. So three exams kind of stood out for me when I was looking from year to year. AP Calc BC went from a 3.35 to a 4.6. AP Lit went from a 3.47 to a 4.16. And AP Gov went from a 3.6 to a 4.0, which those three exams have, those are the highest scores we've had in the past five years. So it's really a testament to the the students and the teachers, they they do a fantastic job. I'm just really excited that every year, we're able to kind of talk about this stuff, and we're talking, when we really get into the weeds, we can kind of figure out what the scores really mean. And what it really comes down to is that students are getting a phenomenal education, the teachers are killing it every day, students are putting in the effort, and the results are, speak for themselves.
Amazing. Thank you all so much. How much work went into this, not just in the presentation, but everything you do every day? Truly appreciate it, and those numbers are amazing. Any comments, questions?
It's a lot of information for some of the, some of the new math, like, it's a lot. It is a lot, so, but we appreciate it. Nate?
I'll go first. I'll echo everything Sarah said, just to thank you. My question is not directed towards anyone in particular, but what's being done to motivate students? Because obviously, it's not a secret that MCAS is no longer a requirement, and obviously, we see that that might have an impact. So what's kind of being the proactive approach to hopefully mitigate any decreased scores in the future?
Can I mention the SEAL of Bili literacy? Because students who are shooting to get the SEAL of Bili literacy have to take a proficiency exam in the target language, but also have a meeting or exceeding score on the ELA MCAS. So that is one of the ways that we're trying to motivate students if they're interested in in getting that SEAL of Bili literacy.
Awesome. It's a great question, though. It's sort of just hanging out over all the work you all do every day. So thank you. Anyone else have any questions?
Also, I mean, you can speak about the book study on The Disengaged Teen as well.
Yes. I know in history, in the history department, they're reading The Disengaged Teen, and a couple of us did that over the summer. And that really has prompted some of our discussions about how we approach the curriculum that we're instructing in the classrooms every day and and how we're trying to reach the kids that are in front of us and and kind of seeing them in a different way. So I highly recommend, if you have not read The Disengaged Teen, it it should be number one on your list. It's really, really good. Really eye-opening.
Awesome. Thank you. We really appreciate you guys being here, and we appreciate all the work you do every day. Just not enough thank yous in the world, really.
Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ton of work. Ton of work by all.
All right, we're going to move right along to our policy subcommittee. We have a second reading of Policy IKF-E, the competency determination on the table. So I don't know if you want to kick it off with anything?
Sure. I'd be happy to read it again if you, if you like.
We can entertain a motion to waive the second reading.
I would like to make a motion to waive the second reading of Policy IKF-E competency determination.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? And that would be 5-0-0. Thank you very much. All right. Any, any discussion around this before we move forward with this policy?
No, really, the the next steps for for us, Dr. Donovan and myself and Mr. Michael Azic, we've been meeting internally. We have a report to submit to the state to prove that we've had this discussion with the committee. We have a policy adopted, and we'll be doing some internal work to get started on that, but this is the first step in that. So, thank you.
All right. Awesome. All right. Well, in the absence of any further discussion.
I would like to make a motion to accept Policy IKF-E competency determination.
Second.
Any further questions, comments, or discussion? All right. Hearing none, all in favor? That would be 5-0-0. Thank you. And very much like the benchmarks, all right? There's a lot of work that goes into this behind the scenes, both by the policy subcommittee, more importantly, by you and your team. Thank you very much.
They're really an amazing group of curriculum leaders. They, they put a lot of effort into the presentation, into the data analysis, and they do a roadshow, really, going through and presenting the data to all of the teachers at the beginning of the year, too. So they do a lot of data analysis. So we're really lucky to have such a strong curriculum leadership team here.
Lot of, lot of it comes from your excitement for the material. You love the data.
I do encourage it.
Yes. Hey, you need data. Hey, you need data. All right, policy subcommittee, are we, are we good? Is there anything else you have you want to address? OK, thank you very much. That's passed. On the subject of subcommittees, we are now with a new, you know, with Allison joining us, we have a new makeup and this is an opportunity for us to have a discussion as a committee and just to look at the policy and the budget subcommittees and, you know, sort of, sort of the work we have before us. We are getting into budget season policy. I just want to take a second and thank you two because you've gotten our policy manual into a really, really good place. We are in a place now where we can take these policies as they come, both from the state and from the guidance from our administration. But I I just want to thank you and I want to thank Brent Ruder before and thank you, Pat, for all the work that you've done. I know it's been a really heavy lift and I just want to let you know that I appreciate the work that you've done. So I I know the committee does and I know the administration does and you've you've put the districts, you've positioned us very well, so it's much appreciated. That being said, you know, at this point, Michelle, you currently sit on the the budget subcommittee and right now, Nathan, you're sitting on on budget with Pat, Allison.
Policy.
Sorry, sorry, policy.
Sorry.
It's late, I'm sorry.
I know, I know.
I'm sorry. But this is an opportunity for us as a new committee to have discussions and see sort of where we wanted to land and I think it's important for us to do so.
Can I kick it off?
Sure, please.
Well, I'll echo all of your message and I'd like to just thank Pat, you jumped straight head on into it. There's no training for policy subcommittee or any subcommittees for that matter. And you picked up right where we left off with the last policy subcommittee, so thank you. With that being said, I also think policy subcommittee is in a great place right now. I think, you know, there's been a lot of hard work over the last year and a half that I've been a member of it, the past half year with Pat. And I think it's honestly in such a good place that I'd actually like the opportunity to switch over to budget subcommittee because I think that, A, that'll help me just become more of a well-rounded school committee member, give me a bit of a different lens to look through, give me some more knowledge. And I think in just terms of continuity, because, you know, there's elections coming up in six months and just to make sure that at least one person will be staying here that has some familiarity with the current budget at hand, I'd love the opportunity to be a member of the budget subcommittee.
All right.
I'd like to stay on the policy.
OK, all right. How are you feeling, Allison?
I'm good.
Talk about jumping in the deep end of the pool.
I don't mind. I'm more than happy to take my seat over in the policy subcommittee.
OK, Michelle, you're feeling good, right where you are?
Yep.
All right, so I will entertain a motion for policy subcommittee.
I make a motion to nominate Allison Cully and Patrick McGuire to policy subcommittee.
A second.
Any further questions, comments, discussion? All right, all in favor? Great. And now I will take a motion for budget.
Make a motion to nominate Nate Erman and Michelle Daxton to the budget subcommittee.
I second that. Any further questions, comments or discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, so we've got some new subcommittees and a lot of work, a lot of work coming up with everything. All right, thank you all so much for the extra time, effort and energy in serving on these subcommittees. We are going to, oh, part of what we needed to talk about was upcoming subcommittee meeting dates and Dr. Bertus, you might be able to, I believe it's just going to be budget subcommittee and you might be able to kind of guide us through that discussion?
Yes, we need to try to get a date on the calendar for the subcommittee because we've got the December school committee meeting that is coming up very, very quickly and we want to be able to meet prior to that school committee meeting. So I don't know if it's easier for Jamie to reach out to try to kind of pull your, you know, schedules and see what might work best.
So we have our next meeting for December, I'm sorry, it's in purple, the 10.
Right.
So.
Oh, that's soon.
Yes, yes. It is. So with that, you know, being said, again, you guys don't need to scramble right now, but if it's better for Jamie to reach out to each of you to try to schedule, but that we'd need to have that done before the 10.
And there'll be multiple budget subcommittee meetings, multiple. And this would, will be more just to kind of get an intro before just that first lush of the committee presentation on the 10th.
Sure, sure. OK, thank you very much. So we're going to leave it like that as long as it's OK with the committee. We're going to leave it that Ms. Quatreeny will reach out and you guys will schedule that before the 10th. Again, thank you very much for your time and effort on that. OK, next up, mathematics curriculum review updated purchases.
Sure, so I tried to include as much detail as possible in this memo to make this very clear. As you know, at the most recent town meeting, they voted to approve that we can now move to five-year licenses. So the most recent math curriculum review purchase was purchased as a three-year license. I have it listed here as Alex Adventure K-3 and Reveal Math, grade seven and eight. The total dollar amount for that purchase was $74,174.72. What we'd like to do is we'd like to work with McGraw-Hill and actually get a credit for that amount and and get a revised purchase for a five-year license. We had already budgeted for this amount, we just needed to wait for the town vote to approve the five-year licenses to be able to move forward with this. It makes our annual cost for licenses, it moves it down from about $25,000 per year to about $19,000 per year. So it is a cost savings. There's a real advantage for for us to take advantage of that. So I do need your approval to go ahead and and make that change.
Great.
I make a motion to update the math curriculum review purchases to a five-year plan versus a three-year planned?
Second.
Any further questions, comments or discussion on this? OK, seeing none, all in favor? Thank you very much. As we saw tonight, that's money well spent. Thank you. Great, we're going to move right along to the acceptances of donations. And Ms. Sheridan is not here, so.
So I think Ms. McCarthy, are you going to come up as part of this and speak a little bit?
I don't need to, but I can if you need me to.
OK, I wasn't sure. So this first, this first donation here is a scholarship donation, a memorial scholarship for William and Marsha Perry Memorial Scholarship. And you have the information there, which is very generous, to be awarded to two students each year in the amount of $2,500 for 20 years. So it is a wonderful, generous, thoughtful scholarship to be awarded.
Thank you so much. It's amazing.
And Ms. McCarthy and Ms. McLaughlin will be able to have a hand in selecting the students that go forward for that scholarship as well, which I think makes it even that much more meaningful.
For sure.
The other donations that you have there is from the John D. Langley Foundation for the Ski Club grant and that is to assist with our ski club for students. And that one is in the amount of $1,176. And the last one is from Wegmans, which is one that we have had in the past. And again, a donation that is to go towards the drama program at the middle school and we are very appreciative of that one as well.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Do we need to vote on them separately or are we voting on them as a group? Separately? All right.
So I make a motion to accept the donation for the William and Marsha Perry Memorial Scholarship in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
Any further questions, comments or discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Wonderful, wonderful thing. Thank you. Next would be the Ski Club grant.
I make a motion to accept the Ski Club grant from the J.D. Langley Foundation in the amount of $1,176.
Second.
Any further questions, comments or discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, thank you very much. And then the Wegmans gift card.
I make a motion to accept the Wegmans gift card in the amount of $200 for the Heron Middle School Drama Club.
Second.
Any further questions, comments or discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. All right, appreciate it. Now we are going to move on to the MASC wrap-up. I can't, I can't do the drum roll, but I'm super excited about it. Last week I had the privilege of joining Michelle and Allison and Dr. Bertus at the Joint Conference for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents. And what a non-stop thrill ride it was, it was really exciting. We had breakout sessions every day, we had at least three to four, if not more, different sessions we were able to sit in. They were structured, very, very roundtable discussions, some wonderful content surrounding, when it came to school committee, surrounding budgets, surrounding policies, surrounding culture and climate, student achievement, there were so many wonderful, and we did, we did actually do a very good job of sort of dividing and conquering. We were able to hit pretty much all three of us, or four of us, were in different seminars all throughout the Hyannis Convention Center and it was just so vast and, you know, sometimes it took you five minutes to go from one end to the other to get to different classes. But for me, I'm just, I'm going to, and then I'm going to hand it off to you guys. For me, the value, like, some of the, some of the biggest takeaways was just feeling that, you know, it's not just Foxborough, the culture and climate of of all towns throughout Massachusetts, number one, there's a lot of pride being number one in public education in the country. There's a lot of pride and it really, you can feel it and it creates a wonderful energy and excitement. It was really awesome to be a part of it. But it also felt like you're shoulder to shoulder with other people, other school committee members, other superintendents, other, you're in these sessions with people that are exactly where we're at, you know, and a lot of things, a lot of themes were reoccurring and it was, the discussions were really great. So I felt, I felt good. I felt like I was, I was with people who understood kind of where we're at, the challenges we face, what we do every day in these volunteer roles, you know, a lot of comments about we should double our salary. So, you know, it's, it's sort of tongue in cheek, but, you know, it's really, it's really, for me, it was cool to be amongst a lot of people who understand and get some wisdom of some people. They had some lifetime membership. I sat in a breakout session with a gentleman who had been on the school committee for 36 years. How many elections is that? Like, it's like crazy. How many elections?
Three times, that's 12 elections. That's almost the same amount of time that Vinnie Igo served.
Oh, there you go. So Vinnie Igo served almost as long as that.
He died in January of 2006.
Amazing.
Approaching 20 years, January.
Amazing man, wonderful. So there was a lot of wisdom. Thank you for sharing that, Joe. There was a lot of wisdom and there was, I sat in a great, the last session I sat in was this wonderful session about genocide. And there was a, there was a breakout session, actually, Dr. Bertus was able to be in it that I was going to go, that surrounded like social media and things like that. And Bristol Community College had this session about genocide and the Holocaust and the work that they're doing where our students, you know, they go over to community college, they talked about how community, the landscape of community college now that it's free and what it looks like at community college. And and that was kind of interesting in and of itself. But I sat there in this breakout session about the Holocaust and just was like, wow, I don't know that I would have been here. It was across the hall, there was standing room only at the session I was going to go to. And I thought, this is exactly the right place to be and I I'm exactly where I'm meant to be. It was so profound. It was amazing. I I shared a lot of information with Dr. Burrows that she could hopefully get back to some of the civics teachers, which is some amazing content and and it was just really cool. So I'm going to, I'm going to pass it on because I could talk all day about this, you know. You know, I love, I love learning about school committee, every, all things school committee. But Michelle?
Yeah, I thought it was a great convention. I found, I think it focused a lot more on mental health and digital wellbeing and AI. I found it was like, the topics were very current and relevant. I attended a very interesting seminar on AI and they were talking about how, you know, how it's going to impact the schools and people are like, well, you know, we survived the internet. Well, we did survive the internet, but at what cost? Like, our test scores are no longer going up, we're kind of going down, we're kind of starting to plummet a little bit. In general, I don't mean Foxborough, I mean in the state, so this is no commentary after we did that great presentation, but.
Ours are great.
Yeah, ours are great, ours are great. But we do see the impact in in student learning. Around 2015, we're kind of in what they call the educational depression because of the internet and we might see another slight dip. So again, the schools have to be very careful how, you know, how we approach this tool and, you know, how we integrate these tools. But so that, I found that very interesting. And again, that's just kind of a learning from the internet. This time we have a heads up, now we know what we're dealing with, now we know how to deal with it going in. So this time, we're going to do better. But to also to comment on what Sarah said about being in the room with all those people, it's, it shows you again how great Foxborough is. People are talking about the lunch programs. Well, we do our own lunches. People are talking about the struggle with the buses. We own our own buses. Like, Foxborough is very, very lucky to be where we are because of everything that we have. Half the room that, you know, was trying to talk about and sell us all their services is like, we take care of that ourselves, we are fortunate. And every time we say, you know, they start looking at the tag, well, where are you, Foxborough? Oh, Foxborough, yeah, you're set. It is, it is nice and it's a good feeling to know that that this is what we're coming from and this is what we're representing and this is what we have, this is, we're in a good place. So this was Allison's first year, so that's what you thought. It was my first one and I think, you know, Sarah did a great job on guiding me on some of the seminars to go to because, you know, you're looking at it and they had a description, but still kind of thinking about what's the best for me being in this role for the first time. So thank you for all your guidance, it was very, very helpful. But I would say that was probably my biggest takeaway. One was seeing what a wide range of school committee members that were there. You had people that were just like me their first time and then people that have been there for 10, 20, 30 years and sharing their experiences, being new and what they're doing when they're first entering into this position and then people, you know, what they've accomplished in their, you know, 30-year terms in doing this. So that was amazing to see. And I thought for those school, for those towns that are keeping those people, like, they must be doing something right and they're retaining those, you know, individuals in there that are making the good decisions for their town. So I thought that was really, really nice. Everything was very timely, like Michelle said, a lot of the curriculum that that was there was exactly what I feel like you need to hear. But I think that was the biggest takeaway for me was being in a lot of, you know, a lot of those different rooms and people are talking about what their towns don't have. And for a lot of them, I think there was like one tiny thing that I was like, do we have that? And, you know, and, but everyone else was like, we don't do that, are you supposed to do that? We don't do that. Where I was able to sit back and say, oh, I know we do all those things. So that was a, that was a very, you know, nice eye-opener for me to see that we are as, as a town, as a school committee, are very in tune what's going on and way ahead with policies and procedures and what we need to do. So I was very proud to be able to say, gosh, I'm on a really good school committee that is really doing amazing, amazing things. So that was my big aha moment, like, OK, this is, this is good, we can continue to do more work. Obviously, there's always stuff that that can be done, but that was the biggest takeaway for me is just what you guys have already done as a committee and people beforehand and and all the stuff that we continue to do. So I was very fortunate that I was able to to go, it was a great experience.
Really glad. It's not just me that likes it. Dr. Bertus, do you want to add anything?
Sure, I think that one of the things that struck me was the amount of sessions that are on digital wellness and social media, current trends in education and what's taking place as far as the developments, the legislative updates, when we see things such as the cell phone bill, looking at other bills that are before the legislature right now, whether it's financial literacy or some of the others and just where we are with those. it's financial literacy or some of the others and just where we are with those, talking with other colleagues from districts and what might their struggles be. I think that one of our keynote speakers, and I brought this with me because of Amanda Ripley, who's the author of High Conflict: Why We Get Trapped and How We Get Out. She's also the author of the New York Times bestselling book, The Smartest Kid in the World. So I thought she was really engaging. It was the second time that I've been able to see her and the second time was even better than the first, just because of her message. And you could see the engagement of, you know, those nearly, well, just over 1,000 people that were in attendance. So I thought it was really well worth the time and very timely.
Hundred percent. Well, thank you. Do you have any questions? Pat and Nate, you guys have a chance to ask us.
I don't have any questions, but just a big thank you for going. Thank you for absorbing all that information and sharing it with all of us. We appreciate it.
Good, I'm glad. Pat, anything to add? Maybe next year we'll get you.
Maybe.
To echo, it's a big time commitment, right? And you can't do that. So it's the first time that we've had three members that were able to go, which we've never been able to have that. So again, to echo what Nathan said, to thank you and that even if you're able to go for a day in the future, but it is a time commitment, so.
Yes, it is, for sure. And it was nice. You were there for two out of the three days, but it was like, you know.
They went by fast.
Yeah.
It was very quick.
You hit the ground running. And then it was like every day to the evening. It was pretty much a solid 12 hours every day. Like, it was a lot, but it was fun.
But I do agree, that keynote, she was, I mean, she was amazing. I think even at the end, she went overtime and she was still taking questions and it was so engaging. I thought just the way she presented was top-notch. She was great.
For sure, yeah. Well, thank you all, thank you as a committee. I mean, the fact that we had three of us there, yep, super proud. One more feather in Foxborough's cap. We're going to go to community update and just as a note for everyone, one of the sessions I sat in talked about, talked about the agenda. So I'm just going to say, we may see a little, a little change coming up on the community update and getting a little more granular with kind of what we're going to discuss. So I'm just going to put that out there for the public, but, you know, stay tuned. We'll make sure we're all in line with the open meeting law for that. But we'll start with you, Allison. Anything to add for community update?
No.
Anything going on, Michelle?
Yes, CPAC is working with the Rec Department and YMCA to have a sensory-friendly area in the Light Up the Town event that'll be occurring that I'm sure Nate will be talking about. So this is the first time we're doing something like this, so, you know, we hope it goes well. We're trying to think of what would work best. Again, if it works well, we'll do it again and we'll refine our processes, but this is, we're going to give it a go.
Great, awesome.
And look forward to more information coming soon. We haven't gotten everything.
Watch the website, Facebook.
Emails should be going around and we will be posting it places. We just don't have everything nailed down quite yet, but we will very soon.
So stay tuned. Perfect segue to Nate.
It is. So Light Up Town is happening November 29th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. on the Foxborough Common. Besides the 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. portion, we'll get there, there's a full day of activities happening throughout the day everywhere. I'd be here for the next hour just telling you about them all. So make sure to check the Facebook pages online so that you know about everything that's happening and then, of course, Light Up Town is happening from 4:00 to 7:00. They have more of the Common blocked off this year, so it's going to be even bigger and better than it was last year, so it's going to be a lot of fun.
So exciting. All right, Pat?
The youth football and cheer program hosted some Super Bowls for the league this past weekend over at, on Payson Road. Great success, everybody was talking about how great it was for the fields. Our fourth-grade team actually won, so they're going to be playing for the state championship at Bell and Ham next, this coming weekend. So congratulations to them. And the 14 youth cheerleaders have qualified for Nationals, so they are currently fundraising right now for help with getting down to Orlando for Nationals in December.
Fantastic, thank you. Dr. Bertus?
I think what I'd like to do is just wish all of you and then everyone and their loved ones a joyful Thanksgiving. I think this is a time that we think about what we're really grateful for. It kind of reminds us this time of year. At the same time, recognizing that there's many families that face food insecurities at this time. So generosity makes a real big difference. And with that, I want to make a point of kind of recognizing one of our students, Daniel McLaughlin, who is our 351 ambassador, who's been running a food drive and coordinating that with all of our schools and so many people that have donated and that has gone to the Foxborough Food Pantry. So again, to thank him and just everyone's generosity really makes a big difference. So to wish everyone a healthy and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, yeah.
That reminded me that on Sunday morning at the Charter School, personal best sponsors, sort of a Meals on Wheels thing, they're looking for volunteers for families to bring a couple meals out to local people in the neighborhood for, so that'll be Sunday morning at 9:00 a.m. at the Charter, I remember seeing that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Great, great cheer.
I have nothing to share, but that was wonderful. That all sounds great.
Okay, Stevie Yasmin, thanks for hanging in there. And do you have anything you want to add?
There's a blood donation truck at Patriot Place down by Davio's, so if anyone is by there, go give them your blood.
Awesome, awesome. Yes, Steve?
I don't have that.
Thank you. All right, I don't really have anything, but I said I would say goodnight to Ariana and Enzo. So I wanted to thank you all and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? 5-0-0. Thank you all for being here tonight.